Okay, so you want this to go to the left? I am as wide as it'll go, so maybe... So... Should I tilt down a little bit?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start a work session for the city of McMinnville. And I would like to introduce Jen Columbus. She's the philanthropic director for the Oregon Community Foundation for the northwest Willamette Valley area. Hopefully, I've got that most of correct. And she's going to talk to us tonight about forming a donor advice for the city of McMinnville or some other group of people within this area, and give us some ideas about how we might go about this. So Jen, would you please come forward? Thank you very much for being here tonight. She's had a very full day between now and evening.
Testing, testing, on? Okay. Thank you, councilwoman. Thank you. Good to meet you, city council and staff and guests this evening. As previously mentioned, my name is Jen Columbus. I am the philanthropic advisor and regional director for the Oregon Community Foundation. And in that role, I work with donors across Marion Polk and Yampel Counties that are interested in solving some sort of community issue or contributing to a cause that they care about. And that could be a wide variety of things. Oftentimes, it could be a scholarship that they want to support in their community. Sometimes, it could be helping with an issue facing a community or broadly, an issue facing the entire state. Do I just move? And so briefly, a little bit broadly about community foundations. They're a little bit unique and unlike normal foundations that you may have heard of in that community foundations provide grant making. We often have competitive grant processes. A lot of people that are familiar with nonprofits, especially Oregon Community Foundation, may know us for the grant making that we do out in the community in form of people applying for grants to the foundation. But that money, instead of coming from one large business or one wealthy donor, comes often from thousands of different people who have set an intention uniquely of what their priority is. And then collectively, the community foundation takes in those dollars. We invest them, and then we put them back out in the form of grants or scholarships. And so, community foundations broadly have been around for over 100 years. And it's something that there are often community foundations across the country. Some are very large, some are much smaller. Oftentimes, they are very focused on one specific community, just like the McMinnville area has a community foundation. But Oregon Community Foundation is unique in that we see Oregon much more broadly. And so, we are the Oregon Community Foundation. So we have thousands of different funds that have been set up by individuals or businesses or families or communities that have a cause or causes that they care about. And they came to us to help them get that good work and those dollars out into the community. Our vision at the Oregon Community Foundation is a healthy, thriving, sustainable Oregon. And we do that by improving the lives of all Oregonians through the power of philanthropy. And so, we offer a wide variety of what we call funds that offer basically ways to serve this mission. Some of those, like I mentioned, are scholarship funds. We are the largest conduit of scholarship funds in the state of Oregon. And we partner with lots of different communities and individuals to help Oregon students go to school and pursue their education. And that's often because donors have set that intention and contributed to that and named what that criteria looks like. Another type of fund that we have is what's called a field of interest fund, where donors have named a specific area of interest and said, "OCF, we don't know exactly what organizations or entities are out there doing that work across Oregon. And we want you, through your grant making and your community investments, to make those decisions on our behalf." So we will name something such as education in central Oregon or early childhood issues facing coastal communities, for instance. But OCF, you make the decision on where those funds go. And then the largest area that OCF works with donors on is what is called donor advice funds. And that's what we're talking about today. And donor advice funds are quite common. You'll see them often what Vanguard and other entities have what are called commercial donor advice funds. OCF also provides those donor advice funds for the community. And it is something that, instead of starting your own private foundation and finding a way to invest those assets yourself, you instead bring those dollars to OCF. And OCF will invest those dollars with all of our other donors. And then you have the benefit of advising on where those dollars ultimately go. It's the way that we work with our donors and that they maintain the most control because they themselves get to select who the beneficiary of the money is. Broadly, the way Oregon Community Foundation works is you give an asset. A lot of times, it's cash, but not always. Sometimes donors will give us property. They'll give us business interests. They'll give us lots of different things. But typically, most commonly, someone will give us cash, either during their lifetime or a lot of times, we have people that are doing this in their estate plans. But typically, they will give us something. And we will then accept that asset and then advise them on what those options are that they then get to kind of narrow those priorities and figure out what they want to focus on. And then you, as a donor to the Oregon Community Foundation, are assigned what we call a donor relations officer. And a donor relations officer is the person that gets to know the donor the best. They're the person that knows what is happening either in the community or what the focus or the priority is for that donor. And then if there are things that come across OCF's door that the donor may want to know about, we will share that. If the donor comes across something that they want to support, then they let their donor relations officer know that. And then OCF will go through a process, a due diligence process, to make sure that that selected entity is able to receive grants from the community foundation. And nine times out of 10, that's no problem. We're able to direct those funds from the community foundation, from that named fund, to the organization. And one thing that we had talked about is it's rather unique, what you were considering. You've identified a community priority and are trying to figure out a way to best move forward and solve that problem in the community. And from my understanding in previous conversations, OCF would be more of a way to help bring together dollars and hold those dollars until the time made sense that you all, as a community, felt ready to invest in whatever that next step is. And that may be an existing organization or group of organizations, or it may be something that is yet to be determined. And so partnering with OCF would give you that flexibility and that time to really catalyze and convene the community, figure out what those priorities are for you. And then when you're ready, move forward with making an investment or multiple investments in whatever entities you've identified that makes sense for your community. Some things to know about this type of fund that we've talked about. With a donor advice fund, you can start with a gift of $5,000 or more. But the fund must reach a minimum of $25,000 before you can begin making grants out into the community. You can recommend grants to qualified nonprofit public charities, religious institutions, and government entities. The funds can be endowed, meaning that they go on in perpetuity. They're invested in our long-term investment pool. And they will grow over time with under-market conditions. Or, kind of the idea that we had talked about, was having that entire principal be available to be spent down. Once it reached that $25,000, that entire amount could then be exhausted if there was one or more issues that made a lot of sense to invest in and you wanted to spend that money down to zero and close the fund ultimately. The way OCF would see this relationship is we would ask the city council or whoever the official donor to the fund was to name between one and three advisors that would be our main points of contact. But if you had lots of different people that wanted to be involved in the decision-making process, then that would be an internal conversation amongst whoever was involved. And then we would work with those one to three advisors directly to ultimately take in that advice and extend those funds out into the community. And so, I think really what I'd like to share is there's a lot of various ways to craft and customize a plan of charitable fund at the foundation. And this is just kind of the start of crafting that conversation. Every fund that we work with and every donor that we work with has very different ideas and priorities and timelines and reasons for wanting to come to the foundation and wanting to make a difference. And so I think starting the conversation and figuring out what's possible is really great. And then we can kind of see if there are opportunities to really make an impact. And also, any sort of technical experience or advice that OCF can provide, given that we're doing this work on a statewide scale. And some of the documents that I had shared with you are some of the research documents that OCF has either done ourselves. We do have a fully-staffed research department on staff. Or that we had commissioned. And one thing that we are seeing is more and more work in this area being done by our research team because we do know that both locally and on a statewide scale, this is continuing and increasing priority in Oregon.
Perhaps I should have said as part of the introduction that we're discussing this conceptually as a means of putting together funds in addition to what we might already have planned for the homeless crisis in our neighborhoods. And we just felt like this was an avenue we should explore and had a great many possibilities. We were kind of leaning towards the idea of keeping it such that you could expend all of the funds. But hopefully, it would be something that people would want to contribute to and be involved in. So are there any questions for Jen tonight?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and for sharing that information with us this evening. Very helpful.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I was just saying thanks. Thanks for coming.
Could you kind of tell us what the likelihood or the investment return would be for the expendable fund?
Yes. So of the two different options that are available for establishing a fund, we offer, like I said, that wholly expendable fund where it would be fully exhausted. Or we offer the permanently endowed option where it's co-invested with the majority of the rest of our donors' investments. And the wholly expendable fund has very minimal, if any, return because we need access. If you were to call the next day and say, "Okay, we've made up our mind and we want all $25,000 or more that you have in that account to go out the door to whatever that initiative was or that identified organization was." And so, really, it's very minimal.
I think you mentioned something like 2%, 3%, something in that range?
If that.
If that, okay. All right, thanks. That's good to know.
Something to keep in mind.
Hi. Can you tell me what kind of fees are involved in the management of the fund?
Yes, absolutely. So, OCF charges an annual fee of just under 1%. It's technically 95 basis points. And so whatever is in the fund, we charge that just under 1% for up to the first $2 million in any of our funds.
And the only limitations on the use of the fund are established by the fund, like whoever started the fund. So the parameters on what the fund can be used for are established there. There's no other parameters other than that?
Right. So whoever are the named donors to the fund are the ones that ultimately make those decisions. The only exception is if, for some reason, when we go through that due diligence process after a recommendation is made, if an organization is, for whatever reason, unable to receive those funds, then we would come back and explain why we were unable to make that recommendation. Most often, it's because an organization has either not yet applied for or has let their 501(c)(3) status lapse or there's some kind of just small issue. And then we can work with the organization to get that back in good standing. And so typically, it's just kind of a timing thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I appreciate you coming tonight, Jen. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do we want to discuss at this point in time whether we might like to pursue this? I realize it's been kind of a real quick run-through, but I know I've mentioned it to, I think, most of you at one point or another. And I think there's some good possibilities with it. So who would like to begin?
So I actually really like the idea that we can give the opportunity for others to participate. I know there's a lot of people and community organizations and citizens that might like to contribute to being able to do more. And so I like the idea both that it's very organized and we get to utilize the knowledge that that fund has about how to distribute those funds effectively. And that it also gives the opportunity to make the fund, to have more resources available to us for doing more for the benefit of the community. So I like the idea. I think we should pursue it.
Remy?
I mean, I think at the onset, it seems like a lot of possibility. I, of course, in the back of my mind, I think about Habitat for Humanity and YCAP and St. Barnabas and a number of other organizations that are already serving this community that have a lot of independent fundraising. And currently, they're in charge of their own fundraising. It's completely independent from the city council or any decision-making about where funds would go. So I kind of have that in the back of my mind that there's a positive to having a consolidated effort, but then also wanting to continue to work with and support the many organizations in our city that are already serving these populations and not draw from their funding. I like the bit of information we've received, but it does feel like a bit of information. So I wouldn't be comfortable pursuing those. A good presentation, and I appreciate your time coming out. I would want to have a lot more information before pursuing anything.
Okay. Thank you.
As for my readiness to vote or move forward, I would agree essentially with Councilor Drapkin's position. I'd be interested in retaining more discussion, information, and potentially some scenarios. I'm lukewarm at best. And it's not as in, I'm not excited. I'm not terribly excited. I appreciate the potential efficiencies it could offer, having them administer the grant and provide us opportunities in a quest to cut down on staff time. But outside of that, don't get terribly excited one way or the other. But I'd be happy to further discuss. I think playing out a few scenarios would help me in my mind model how it's going to effectively work.
No, it's not uncomplex. It's just, and I don't think the whole process on it was in any way to take away money from other places. It was more to kind of help fulfill maybe some of the goals that the Affordable Housing Committee had in mind. It's just kind of more of a supplement in that nature, not to in any way infringe on other entities. But yes. Adam? Adam?
I would tend to agree with Zach, but I'm open to the idea, but it's kind of just a quick snapshot of what we got tonight. And I guess, different from Councilor Drabkin, is I do kind of like that it would bring the possibility of bringing the funds together and so there's not redundancy in the community because we'd have the potential to have like one set of eyes looking over that. Hopefully, we could be more efficient and with the dollars that are out there, I do feel that it would, you know, probably take some money from other organizations because there's only so much money to give in the community. And so that would be a plus and a minus depending how you look at it. But in my eyes, it would look similar to kind of how Love Inc. is in Newburgh and how everybody donates to that and it clears through them. And they seem to be real efficient with that model. So if I look at it that way, it looks more positive than negative at the 30,000-foot level.
Sal?
Yeah. Thanks. Like the others, I'd like to see specifically how the money would be, I'd like to see how the money would be applied and used. I think that Love Inc., Gen Newburgh, as Adam points out, is a really good model. Others have been less successful, so I think it's worth consideration.
Okay. So would I be amiss to suggest to staff that we're interested in having them maybe come back with some suggestions on how we might use this or even put it towards the Affordable Housing Committee and ask them what they think we could use a situation like this for?
I would agree with that.
Kind of thought you might. So is everybody okay with my suggestion? All right. I'm seeing thumbs up. All right. Thank you. And thank you, Jen, again, for coming. All right. Our next item on the agenda is low-barrier shelter concept, and Mr. Tauri is going to talk to us about that.
I think I'm good. Thank you, Council President Minke. Counsel asked for discussion about low-barrier shelter concept as we were building the agenda for this work session. Just by way of introduction, a low-barrier shelter is, based on a housing-first program, means that anyone who can, before anyone can access treatment for addictions, mental health, and other chronic issues, or as Ryan Doubt may have described earlier this afternoon, life barriers, they need a safe and secure shelter. Low-barrier shelters have seen some success in some communities and been not successful in others. I think there are a series of questions that we'd like to pose to the counsel to lead into some discussion tonight. Who is the shelter serving? How does the shelter respond to a community need? Is this the best solution, given the need and the resources? Who will operate the shelter? What is the sustainable operating revenue for the shelter? What is the minimum standard for participation? Are there other communities of similar size to McMinnville with similar resources that have successful low-barrier shelters? And what can we learn with them? Are there other communities of similar size to McMinnville with similar resources that have not had successful low-barrier shelters? What went wrong and what can we learn from them? Do low-barrier shelters work well in communities with limited shelter opportunities? Is it a safe environment for vulnerable populations, for instance, women, children, and the disabled? And what does success look like? And with that, by way of introduction, I would encourage the counsel to have some conversation about any of these questions, your initial reaction to them. I think leading into that, it might be useful to hear from either Counsel President Minke or Counsel Drabkin or both about some recent conversations at the Affordable Housing Task Force. And should the counsel be interested in pursuing some of the answers to the questions that we've identified, I think that it may be that the Affordable Housing Task Force is the right body to initiate that work and then bring back a report to the counsel at some future date.
I'm going to ask Remy to speak, but I did want to comment briefly that when we discussed this possibility in the Affordable Housing Task Force, we didn't feel like we had enough information or direction about how we would proceed with this. But I'm going to let Remy talk a little bit about it. I did want to point out a couple of things afterward in regard to, well, she's going to tell you about some of the RV camping policies we asked to have put in place. But in addition to that, there's recently, as of probably within 30 days, we're going to Yellow Line, I know, towing zone on the left side or on the YCAP side of the cul-de-sac. And it will complete the circle and the whole left side. And that will be a tow-away zone, and it's for emergency purposes, if I'm understanding that correctly. We're also doing that on Marsh Lane. I believe it goes up to the second driveway. Am I correct from the corner?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, that's correct. So that will occur probably within 30 days. So something to be aware of. Remy, do you want to take over and talk about what we discussed in affordable housing?
Sure. I'll do my best here. I'm going to kind of back up and use a separate item that Affordable Housing has agenda or action item that we've undertaken to really relay where our thinking is on this. So the very first action item that the Affordable Housing Task Force took on was memorializing a policy that had been in place for 20 years in the city of McMinnville. And that was exempting nonprofit affordable housing builders from SDC codes, or SDC fees, I should say. We took that on very seriously in the sense that we not only evaluated where the city of McMinnville was budgetarily, but we also looked at surrounding communities and the effectiveness. And then we were able to bring a recommendation back to this council, something that worked for the city, that didn't create hardship here. And it was a very, for what was considered low-hanging fruit, it was a very well-vetted conversation and very well-researched recommendation. And the concept of a low-barrier shelter is not one that originated either in the Housing for Homelessness Task Force or specifically in Affordable Housing. Rather, it's an idea that has started as a conversation here. And so spinning off of kind of the last thing that our city manager said, which was about sending it to Affordable Housing. If it's a concept that the city council would like the Affordable Housing Task Force to add and to research and to pursue and to bring back a recommendation, we are more than happy to do that. But only in our very last meeting, which followed the council meeting, was it ever even a real topic of conversation. So we are not at the point of being able to bring forth a recommendation at this time. So hopefully that is kind of, hopefully my thoughts there are clear in that we would like the opportunity and the time, if the council and the community wants us to look at that, that we will do it and we will be thorough in our research with it and bring you a recommendation we can stand behind. That kind of leads to this second part. In your staff report, the two concepts of a low-barrier shelter and our recent recommendation are linked. But I'd like to take this opportunity to separate them in that we are happy to do the work on researching a low-barrier shelter. But our recent recommendation is really related to a recommendation we've already made, a program we've already supported, and an ordinance we've already passed and that has been enabled to allow a program to exist, but that we have not made robust enough in our community to make it effective. And that would be the Safe Overnight Parking Program, which did come from the Housing for Homelessness Subcommittee. To be clear, this is a program that allows one to three vehicles at any location, no more than three on any piece of property anywhere in the city. And in residential areas, is limited to one vehicle. These sites are managed by a nonprofit partner that we have called Champion Team. And Champion Team, at least in regards to this program, is funded through a grant from Oregon Housing and Community Services. I point that out for two reasons. One is that the city is not spending any taxpayer dollars on this program. And two, that that grant was conditional upon activating a certain number of sites and having them work. During our last council meeting, it was said that this program isn't working. I would disagree with that. I would say this program is not working enough. In the city, currently, we have about 10 private property owners that are using the ordinance as intended, and therefore 10 people that are discreetly living around the city. And we have one other site, one city site, that has one vehicle. And in the first 30 days, the person that was staying there was able to gain employment. We have spent a long time developing this program, and actually, it has been modeled on another very successful program. So the recommendation that we're making to the city council today is that we continue to support the program that we have continued to endorse and that we have enabled, but that we haven't put the resources necessarily into supporting. So that would mean that we would be asking for the additional sites so that Champion Team can maintain its funding. Again, these are one to three-vehicle sites. I see our community member, Scott Thorcelson, in the audience, and I'm calling him out right now because it wasn't that long ago that he sat here and talked about how we could identify other sites throughout the community so that there's the opportunity to allow populations that may have become condensed to disperse. And while this isn't exactly what he was talking about, this is a program that is in that same vein. It allows for discreet installations throughout the city of McMinnville, but it will take community support. To that community support, we're not only asking the McMinnville City Council to direct staff to identify additional properties, we have asked, I will say, a litany of community members. And we do have support. Currently, we have a mother and a child, and to give a child the stability that the school bus can go there every day and pick them up and get them to school. We have another government agency that is signing on to provide a site. Today, Champion Team and I met with the county commissioners, and we talked to them again about providing additional sites, perhaps, perhaps, on property tax foreclosure properties, perhaps elsewhere. And that is a conversation that's happening at the county commission level. In addition, we have people that have signed up to host community gatherings to try to disseminate accurate information in our community, especially in light of recent propaganda that's been out that is quite inaccurate. We have community members that have signed up to go to other businesses and ask if they would be willing to participate. And we have community members that have signed up to present the Safe Overnight Parking Program to their service clubs to try to broadly inform our community members about the program that has been developed, the program that has a 20-year track record of helping people transition from being without homes to being housed. And I think in conclusion, what I would say is that is how we view this program, is as a transitional housing program. And that is how Oregon Housing and Community Services viewed this program, was as a transitional housing program. And I will be corrected, I know if I'm wrong, but the truth is, is if this program was robust enough and there were enough sites that our current ordinances would be enforceable. I guess the last thing, and I said it was going to be the last thing, but it's not really the last thing. You gave me a mic. So the last thing that I would say is, the idea has come up that somehow this is enabling people to move here, or this is enabling people to be homeless, or encouraging it. But these sites and this program, which has a very strict code of conduct and behavioral agreement, is targeted completely at people that are trying to change their situation, people that are trying to move into homes, people that are trying to seek employment, but without the stability of even a place where they can safely be every night, really struggle to do so. And so I would ask this council to direct staff to designate those places. I know that the, and I don't think I'm out of place in saying that the executive team has met and has designated internally those places should this council choose to move forward. Those places will be outfitted with porta-potties and garbage disposal. They will not have any storage outside the vehicle. And again, this is all at zero cost to taxpayers. And I do hope that as a community, we can come together to try to give people a chance to change their situation. And I believe this program is one avenue of doing that.
Thank you, Remy. You weren't horrendously specific, but I believe the city has agreed to set up at least six sites that they have their eye on at this point in time in various parts of their...
Four for sure.
Four for sure. Okay. But there's been discussion of more than that. So look to see those in your neighborhoods or in the city parking lots and other places. Okay. Are there any, is there any discussion at this point in time on this particular topic?
I just have a couple of questions.
Can you speak into the mic, Sal?
Apparently not. I can try. Thank you. Remy, I just had a couple of questions. First, I want to say thanks for all the work that you're doing on Affordable Housing. Just like to say thank you for all of your work, Remy. I know you're doing a lot of work outside of this committee, trying to deal with this. So I really appreciate the time and effort. Do we, can we hear tonight before we give further direction about the locations that we have in mind first? Second, you indicated that there was no anticipation of tax costs to the city. I know that some of this is coming in through grants and other support, but can you talk a little bit about the continuity of the funding stream?
I'll do my best, Sal. Sure. The first is that, as I've already mentioned, we have active sites. We haven't disclosed locations because, quite frankly, we don't want people to be harassed or attacked. And the temperament in our community right now, unfortunately, is one where that's a real fear factor. I will say you've probably been past some of our sites and you don't know they're there. Our city site operates dusk to dawn, so it is really just a safe, dependable place to be at night. I know, I guess I said there's no cost to the city, I should say there's no additional cost. I know code enforcement also checks in, and there are, I suppose in any activity, there are some related costs. But taxpayers are not paying any additional costs for porta-potties. They're not paying any additional costs for garbage service. Recology has pledged garbage service to any site we establish within the city. We currently have both the Oregon Housing and Community Services grant. And then in addition to that, we have a couple of businesses which have pledged a year of garbage service for... for one or two sites. And we have a couple other businesses which have pledged continuous dollars. You know, this is a pilot program, so do we have five-year funding laid out? We don't. We simply don't.
Okay. Can I just ask a follow-up question, just to clarify my understanding? So, what you're saying right now is that we currently have 11 locations around the city. You're interested in an expansion to another six, primarily on city property. There's no cost to taxpayers, at least immediately, for the cost of those shelters. Have we, two questions. One, have we had any problems, any incidents whatsoever at any of the 11 sites that we currently have? And then, just the second point, which is just an observation, in terms of cost-effectiveness, Lane County did a lot of research on low-barrier shelter options. And what they found is that most low-barrier shelter options are $1.6 million for a 50 to 75-person unit, which is about $21,000 per person. So, if you're able to provide shelter currently for 11 people at zero cost to the city, I think that is a really good reflection on your work.
I won't take any out at all. We've done nothing yet. But this is, let me try to answer your numeric questions. We have 10 unmanaged sites. This just means community members that knew somebody, maybe they had a family member or a friend, or somebody in their community, a neighbor, that was in a position they could no longer afford housing. They had or had access to an RV, and they've allowed them to live on their property. This would not have been permitted before the passage of Ordinance 5057. We have one managed site. Now, I know code enforcement has checked in on all of those sites, but we have one managed site. And what I'm asking for is additional managed sites. I'm asking for those sites because our grant funding is dependent upon having a certain number of sites active, and active within the next couple of weeks. So, we have one active, or one managed site currently. The last, the last numbers that I have is that there is the potential for five additional sites within the city that will accommodate enough vehicles to secure the grant funding. In addition to that, I have another government entity that has pledged an additional site. I have one faith-based community that is in discussion about a potential site, and one private business owner that just earlier today said they were ready to move forward with a site. Those last three aren't active yet, and so we do need these additional city sites to secure the grant funding from Oregon Housing and Community Services. Did I answer your questions?
You did, thank you. And I apologize if I'm going to ask some other questions that you've already answered, and I know you have, but...
I answer these questions all the time.
Right, many times, many times. The question that I have is, you made the point that the folks who are going to these sites have been vetted, and they're people who are really just trying to, they're in a bad situation, but they're trying to make the best of it. Can you talk a little bit about the process by which applicants are screened and how this will help those folks?
I can a little bit. Heather Hunter, the executive director of Champion Team, is also here, and she could speak to it more than I could. But because this is an agreement between people that are utilizing the site and Champion Team, and then ultimately between Champion Team and the property owner, the property owner can put any restrictions they want. So, if the property owner says it's important to us that people are clean and sober, then Champion Team writes into the contract that you have to agree to random drug testing. This is a little bit more of a far-out situation, but it's an accurate one out of another municipality. There was a site with the same program, different city, where somebody was in an industrial area and had a lot of theft happening, so they said, "We're open to this, but only to somebody that has animals." And so, then they had an RV, the people living in the RV had dogs, the dogs were barking, and the theft stopped. That's a true story. So, as I've said, we've also had a property owner specific that they really are interested in helping, but they're really interested in helping children, and so having that child aspect is very important. The behavioral contract can include any number of specifications. It's up to Champion Team to not only screen the applicants, but really more importantly, to make a good match, of matching a site and the person that will be using that site. And that's what Champion Team does. They're a peer support network, and so this is, they are already working within the homeless community, and it's their prerogative to also see this program succeed. So, they're more interested in having a successful site than just having a site for any period of time. These sites are also not permanent. The property owner can choose to terminate the contract at any given time. Champion Team acts as a first responder if there is any sort of issue with the site, whether that was a neighborhood complaint or another vehicle that tried to park on the property. I would actually love if you would ask more questions, because I have this community dialogue a lot, and I feel like, in some ways, I have too much information, and I don't always do a good job at expressing it. So, please ask questions, and I would love to try to answer them and get good information out.
So, you're providing, or you've mentioned that people have the satisfaction of helping a child out, and you've talked about possibly assisting, and these people can also assist in security situations, even tacitly, you know, without any real, anything on their part, they just happen to have dogs that bark. Can you mention other ways that the, there's some positive outlets that happen with this?
So, I'll do my best. I've heard about properties, whether they're foreclosed or on, not abandoned, but uninhabited, and simply having the presence of somebody there acts as a natural deterrent for crime. Also, the people that have not only been in our program, but people that have been in programs in other municipalities, tend to have a great desire to maintain their ability to stay in that location. So, they're not allowing other people to congregate in their area. They're proactively going, contacting Champion Team, and if it were necessary, Champion Team would contact the police department. They're keeping their areas clean. And another important part of this program is that there's no exchange of money or services. And that's actually a protection for the property owner in that they are not becoming a landlord in this process. I would say the biggest benefit, of course, is the stability that it provides that allows somebody to get a job, to get an apartment, to get their kid to school every day. That is a community-wide benefit in that people are able to focus on their needs for participation in our community beyond basic survival needs.
I think Sal has one more question, and then we're probably going to need to move on to our next topic.
Looks like Wendy has a question, and she's been very patient.
Thank you for all the information and all the work, Remy. I know you won't take accolades, but you've come a long way. Your whole team has come a long way, so I'd like to celebrate the successes you've had so far. I did have a question about, you talked about that these will be transitional, are considered to be transitional. How, what rules are in place, or what is the mechanism to make sure they're transitional and not long-term housing?
So, each property owner is able to say not only what their requirements are for their site, no smoking, et cetera, but they're also able to set terms. So, they might set it up as a 30-day site, 60-day, 90, 145, or perhaps they don't put those parameters, or they can also put time restrictions, right, dusk to dawn, things like that. Whatever the pledge is for that site or the intention, though, the property owner at all times maintains the ability to end participation in the program. And ending participation in the program still means that Champion Team will come in and take all of the next steps. In the program that this is modeled after, which has been going for about 20 years and at any time has about 70 functional sites, we've only heard of one time in which somebody had to be forcibly removed from a property in 20 years. Did I answer your question?
Well, actually, I have one follow-up. So, if, say, a homeowner wanted to continue to be a site, but the idea is that one individual living in the camper isn't meant to live there for like two years, right? Is there something that is a part of the Champion Team's process to move the people through to other options for them, so that it can be free for somebody else who might need that site?
Sure. Well, first of all, if somebody doesn't follow the contract in that site, the Champion Team will automatically remove that person and give it to a family or a person that is interested in complying with the rules set out by the program. How did you phrase the first part so I can answer accurately?
Oh, so...
How do we help people move on to the next step?
Oh, helping people to move on. So, Champion Team does training with all of their families before they take a site. And then, part of that training, Heather, are you providing cell phones still? Are you doing that? Are you doing cell phones for families, was something we talked about?
Resources available.
Any resources available? So, Champion Team does regular check-ins, and while they don't provide all of the types of services that are needed for a family, they help those families get to services as well. They have a big connection at work, and then ultimately, Champion Team is receiving this grant funding through YCAP. So, there's already a natural connection or flow that's happening from Champion Team to YCAP as well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, can I just say one last thing? I know this isn't a fix-all, and I don't think it's a fix-all, but it's part of the solution.
Thank you so much, Remy. I really appreciate your response and everybody's questions. It's just great. You've got questions to ask, Remy, afterwards. I'm certain she'd be happy to talk with you in depth, or any other day when she's not working. So, Jeff, you're now going to talk to us about training opportunities through communications across barriers.
Thank you, Council President. Third item on your work session tonight is the opportunity for a community training. The organization Communication Across Barriers was formed about 20 years or so ago by Dr. Donna Beagle, who actually lives just up the road in Tigard. She has been doing training focused on how to provide a research-based model to assist people move out of and stay out of poverty. We've provided some background information to you. I've done some initial outreach to potential partners. My suggestion to you, as you react, and maybe ask questions about the material that's presented to you, and if the council is interested, I would continue to work with other organizations who might be able to cosponsor an event by Dr. Beagle here in McMinnville at some point in the near future. Dr. Beagle has done training in McMinnville as recently as last week. She was in town doing a training for about 100 folks who worked in a number of nonprofit and community organizations. She had representatives of Head Start and the Coordinated Care Organization, among others. She's also done training for Yam Hill County Health and Human Services staff in the last couple of years. So, with that, by way of introduction, I'll turn it over to any questions or comments the council may have.
I know everybody couldn't be here today for the training we had today. Ryan Dowd was here, and I think he's still sitting back there. And he did a fabulous presentation for about three hours today that just, I thought was fantastic. And so, we're trying to bring more education for folks if they're interested. We had at least 80 people here today, and I think many of them took a great deal of information away with them. So, if you have any interest in talking with Ryan, and then, this is another opportunity with Donna Beagle to find out kind of a different perspective, but, you know, similar information on the homeless community, and, you know, how we can relate to them much better than we apparently are having trouble with. So, how does the council feel about maybe bringing Donna here to have another session, a work session? Zach, yes? Remy, yes? Wendy, yes? Adam?
Yeah, I'm open to it.
Okay. And Sal?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so I think that's unanimous, yes, we'd love to have Donna come and talk with us, and hopefully we can find some community partners to join with us. And certainly, it's within the realm of possibility that we might have Brian come back and talk again, too, because he was fantastic. All right, we're going to take about a five-minute break before we start for our evening council session, so everybody, five minutes. Oh, 15? I got through that fast, oh dear.